Okay, folks, thank you. It's 7:00 P.M. Welcome to the public hearing on the charter revision for the election in November of this year. Tonight, we're here to discuss the proposed changes. There's one major, complete change of government, that would be the town manager form of government. And the second one would be changes to the existing charter, if the people so wish to keep it on the present form of government with the Board of Selectment. I'd like to introduce the commissioners on the table. Eric Bergman, Lisa Gazillo, Mary Jo Phelps, Michael Hoynack, last but not least, Art Keating, who, without him, there'd be no commission. This man probably knows the charter by heart now because he's wrote it and rewrote it 200 times in the last two years. For the old commission and for this commission, he has been the man that has always rewrote it, revised it, whatever, every time we talk about it. So without Art, I probably would never even stepped up and asked to be the chair of this commission because there's no way I could do the work that he's done. Art is the vice-chair of the commission. There's one commission commissioner missing tonight, that's Michael Newson. Having said all that, I just want to say that, first of all, I want to commend my fellow commissioners. They've done an outstanding job. Been a pleasure working with them. They've dedicated themselves to this lock, stock, and barrel. We've had more special meetings than probably the last two or three charter commissions combined. That's how dedicated these people have been. They just didn't want to skip and go two weeks. We go every week, every week. So every other week was a special meeting. So having said that, oh, by the way, this is our clerk, Wendy McDernan. She's been right there also for two years, right Wendy? Been the old two. So she too could probably read this charter inside now, go to sleep with it at night. We're gonna have an open discussion. I would just hope that you would address it to the chair. Please don't try to debate amongst yourselves. That's really not what we're here for. But we will take all your questions and hopefully have the answers for you. Just a couple of easy rules for the public hearing. Just announce your name and resident of Clinton, or if you're not a resident. In case people didn't know, I found this out earlier in the year when we had an attorney tell us, you can have someone from another town sitting here tonight. And talk, believe it or not. It's a public hearing, open to the public. So if you will, just say your name and resident of Clinton, or if you're not a resident. Is there anybody at the amandines here who'd like to say anything at that debate? Having said that, we open the floor to the public. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
My name's John Allen, fifteen hoopers waiting. I just have one question, because I've read everything over. We've had a lot of questions, but there's two options there. So the way this thing moves, it goes to the Board of Selectment, do they ordain one, do they pick one, and then goes to referendum in the fall? Or both? Or can both go? Can you have an A or B, or just not change at all for the fall?
Well, John, really, what I just, I don't know if they have to send the whole two packages. The town manager one, definitely, because that's almost a complete change, as I said. The other one, they can, the Board of Selectment can present it just as maybe changes to the existing charter, as I said before. But I guess what I'm trying to get across is, if in fact, for some particular reason, I know some people have mentioned, say, well, just give the people the choice to go with town manager or not. That might seem a simple, simple way of doing things, except for the fact that, if that's the case, there are a lot of changes to the existing charter that need to be done. And if the people don't really want complete change and go to town manager form of government, which I understand is a radical change, I mean, of course, one of his questions, I guess, since they were formed, then at least I'd like to see that basically is about 24 changes to the existing charter that we feel need to be made, even under the present form of government. And before the night's over, I'll briefly go down then, so that people get an idea of what we're talking about in the way of changes. I know some people say, well, is there a "as" or a "the"? No, there are not. There are some real changes that are long overdue to the existing charter, to make it a more efficient charter and better for our selectmen, if they go forward with that form of government. Make it a more efficient government. So yes, John, you know, when I present it to the selectmen, I'll give them, there's a whole charter here, and we have another whole basic charter, if they would like to present A and B on the ballot in November, that would be nice, where the people could say, no, I don't want town manager, just vote yea or nay for the changes. Or maybe they'll just ask as a questions, like they more or less did the last time, but quite frankly, I think people just skipped over that. I don't even think people even knew that there were just changes to the existing charter that should have been made, and as a result, nothing happened. And the worst thing that could happen this November is have nothing happen. That'd be my, that's my thought. Making no changes to this charter at all is just unacceptable. There has to be at least changes to the charter under the present form of government, being the selectmen's form. But if the people do choose to go with the town manager, we are ready tonight. We have a document that, as of, what, a week or two ago? We, as a town attorney, we're over with this again. He went over it earlier in the procedures and came back, and he just clarified a couple of minor things, but he more or less thought it was a pretty good charter. So again, I'm sorry to tie up that, it'd be longer. Next, yes, sir?
Yes, through you, I've seen it done in other towns. I know Sinbury, for instance, had a listing of questions, as many as eight, as few as three, which you could go through diligently and mark the ones you would be in support of. So I think that's what has been done in other towns, and the Board of Selectment would draft those questions for town referendums.
Yeah, they can lump them, like I said, I don't know, I would think that the town clerk would have a nightmare trying to list 24 of the changes. So maybe they can group them, you know, one to eight, you know, something like that. And the main thing is to get those changes out to the public, so that they can read them and know them. And then when they do come into November, they can vote yea or nay just on the changes, if they so desire. Yes, Art?
I agree with you as well. I think it might be as simple as, do you want, one question might be as simple, because there's a lot of red in here for the town manager. It might be just as simple as, do you want, would you, are you in favor of a change of government from Board of Selectment to a town council, town manager, and all of the changes associated with that in the document? That's one question, and that is his point. There's a lot of other changes that both the previous charter commission and the Board of Selectment, the previous part of Board of Selectment agreed upon in this other piece of the document. But in the town manager document, it contains everything that's in the original one as well. So what he's saying, he just doesn't want it to get lost. So that might be one question.
Yep.
And then everything else, you know, there's some highlights in here that are very important. So it'd be like, this question, this question, and this question, and then sub-group together, like there's "as" and commas, and removing an "s," and changing laying of taxes to levying their taxes. That's been in there forever, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Stephanie Patterson, and I'm at 47 Mainwood Drive. I live here year-round. I apologize for being so ill-informed. But would it be appropriate for you to run off the points on that, those 24 points? And are those 24 points already incorporated into the existing? Or are they, are they incorporated into the revised for the town manager position?
In the town manager form, they're, they're already in there.
Okay.
All right, they'll be also included in the town manager form, except for a couple, because a couple relate to the Board of Finance. And under the town manager form of government, there would be no longer a town Board of Finance. So those would not be in the town manager form. I can, if everybody would like, I'll run right to them, I guess, the best I can. One of the first ones that came up was, no individual can hold two elected positions I'll briefly hold for a pause, in case somebody wants to put their hand up and say, that's really stupid.
No, it's not really stupid, but shouldn't you say two or more?
I'm highly赞成.
Two or more. Let's just say. If you hold three, you're still legally, by the letter of the law, you're still compliant. If you want to be a shareholder.
Okay, well, that's a good point. I mean...
There are some people or families in this town that invite them to the dozen position, you know? Like dozen isn't specifically prohibited, if you may try it.
Okay, well, the second change that we're proposing would be, if in fact, there was still a Board of Finance, to it, instead of consisting of six people, we're proposing that it be seven people. This way, you don't have these ties. It doesn't happen often, but I understand it happened as much lately as probably a month or so ago, where it came to be a three-three, and then it's no decision. It's kind of crazy that one of the most important boards in the town has an even number that ends up in the tie. Some people here don't know me, but I introduce myself, I'm so nervous. I'm done, it's not me, the chair. Way back when, I was also on the Board of Finance, and it happened one time while I was on there, and it ended up to be a three-three, no decision. It's kind of crazy. That's why we're saying seven, and four-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I'm Kirk Carr, Clinton resident. I know that I sent a note to Mr. Bergman, because I believe that the number of members of the Board of Finance may be set by state statute. And I would think that your attorney would have caught that, but you might want to double-check that. But I believe that's why, why it is the number that it is.
I've read that statute, I believe, per last year, and it doesn't say you can't have more than six. It just said, when the final week of August started in the state of Connecticut, would you think that you had at least have six?
Okay, well, that...
I don't think you can go under six, but I'd really have to check my memory bank.
I suggest you check...
I think there's a couple of towns that do have more than six members to the Board of Finance. But we certainly will check that.
Okay.
Again, I would have thought that our town attorney would have picked up on that.
I would too.
But sometimes everything...
Yeah, he also didn't check.
But thank you, sir. We will definitely look at it.
He didn't get the date last time either.
Take it close. The third was Board of Finance alternates. Couple years ago, we changed in the charter that the regular members were to go to four years, and somehow, that revision commission forgot to do the alternates along with them. So we're changing it to the alternates will also have four-year terms instead of six-year terms, as the permanent numbers have now. Section 313, we're adding to the Board of Police Commissioners, we have made a proposal to add two alternates to that commission, to make it more consistent with all the other commissions in town and boards that almost everyone has alternates. Again, I pause. I guess this was just a typo. We just had register and the, and our town attorney said, put register of voters, it's section 3-14. It's one of the physicians in the charter. Changed the register of voters term from two years to four years. We had talked with a couple of registrars, they thought that was a great idea. There's a lot of time and money invested in training your registers of voters, and to just have these people just two years, and then you've got to go through the process again. Even the registrars thought that it was a good idea to go to four years. Another typo, if you will, somehow the charter didn't read correctly, so we changed section 4-48, convene, to change the word convene to adjourned. That's when you go from the meeting here and adjourn it to a referendum. We added a, in section 8, that special town meetings, there's a list of things that, in section 8, that you hold a special town meeting for, and we're adding to it land swap transactions. And in section 8, there's various things about which we hold special meetings for. And one thing that was missing was land swap transactions. It has the selling of land, it has the leasing of land, that didn't have the land swap transaction in there. This would be one that I'm sure everybody's ears will perk up in the room. Section 4-6A1, add a resolution to, for having a referendum. We are making a proposal that any amount during the course of the year that is appropriating more than $250,000 go to referendum. The simple fact of this is this, you pass a budget in the spring, you have your capital budget, you have your operating budget, you have everything, it's all there. Middle of the year sometime, I'm not going to try to pick on any one department, so if I say something, if people say, are you picking on us? I'd like to say, someone could come up with an idea and say, you know, I want to build a bridge across Cedar Island for $400,000. Well, all you got to do is have a special meeting at night here, you get about 60, 70 people here, pack the house with 50 of them, it's a famous thing, they all go aye, next thing, you know, you're building a bridge across Cedar Island. So what we're saying is, appropriations of that sort that go with $250,000? Get the machine out, let the people vote on it. Again, I'll pause. Good, bad, or indifferent?
Good.
Thank you. I know there's some people, we hashed about it, I wanted a larger number, believe it or not, some town officials said, about 250, sounds like a reasonable number. I said, well, okay, fine, but... Also, the same wordage, in the same paragraph, 4-6A1, resolution, the old resolution, I think, was something about financing equal to three, it was, what, 5% of the current tax levy? We're recommending that it be changed to 3% more of the current tax levy. That'd be like bonding issues and things of that nature. Again, it was a referendum. We're adding a word, a sentence, that some people thought was necessary, to cover the time that one Board of Selectmen say outvoting, the time of the election. The election's November 4th, the new board doesn't take over until November 19th. But the 4th to the 19th, we're adding that there won't be any new appointments, contracts, things of that nature, so that people going out can't set up the people coming in. All right? So, well, I got to clap on them. Again, we had that from several people, and this is not to say in it, it has happened like this before, blah, 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 to knock any type of government, but it's here to prevent it from happening again in the future. Going up to, I guess, I hope, you'll have to make sure that we're saying this right, we also want about these boards and commissions, no one person may hold more than one elected and two appointed positions. Okay? Thank you. We went to the next step. The next one is, no individual can hold more than three appointed positions. And some people might say, well, you know, okay, we got, we got people here, you know, blah, 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 we want to get people out. This is how you get people out, you get people involved in your government. You have to disperse the power. Again, I'm not picking on any individuals, but I think if you pick up that annual report, you could find some individuals around maybe five, six various boards. It's not good. It's not good for the government, no matter who the person is. Hey, at one time, I was one of those people. You know, but that doesn't make, you know, that's not good, to have one individual holding three, four spots, like, or four or five spots. Three, except, we think. With one exclusion, those would be the boards and commissions, that does not count ad hoc and subcommittees, because as you know, sometimes a selectman will be appointed to a subcommittee, a building committee, which is only going to be in session for four to five months. That's a whole different issue. Fire truck committee, or something like that, that's a whole different issue. We're talking about, and I don't have to explain, I think everybody in this room knows what we're talking about, the full boards and the full commissions. This was an interesting one, section 7-6B. It was about the terms in the, I keep going Family Goods Services, I know it's got a new fancy name, from Mary Jo, or at least, they're always correct, the proper name of it. But it was created by an ordinance back in 1991, they changed the name of it not too long ago, a couple of charter commissions. But there was an unusual, it's the only commission or board that I know of in town that had like term limits. An individual couldn't serve more than three consecutive terms on that. And we felt, well, why? You've got other boards and commissions that people can serve on six, eight, but let's make it consistent. We're trying to get this charter consistent. By far, even with all these changes, you know, we have a long way to go, but all the charter, commission, debt risk, we're trying to tackle the most important ones. So it's, there will be no term limits to that particular criteria. EDC, Economic Development Commission, add three alternates to that commission. That's a very important commission, and I know from time to time, I don't even know who's on it this time, I plead ignorance, but I'm sure there's some very green people, John's on it, and I think he has an operating one this time. But I know myself, when I was selecting, I was lying into that board, could never get a meeting. They were always, never showing up, you know? So if we at least get three alternates, maybe between the alternates and, what is it, John, now, five?
Five.
Five on there, three alternates, you may be able to get eight people to show up. Because Economic Development Commission, as you all know, is important to this town. We're all pleading to get our tax base based on businesses and things of this nature, you got to have an Economic Development Commission, and they have to convene it.
Dennis, I think you also expanded to seven, if I read it correctly, then there'd be seven members and three alternates.
I don't know if we expanded. Art, did we expand a little? I don't remember that, John.
I don't think so.
We'll check that. Would you, would you like to make that recommendation up? Okay, hold on here now.
What section is it?
You were right, John.
Of course.
Somehow, I don't know, I don't remember that being a resolution, but in the proposal says, Economic Development Commission shall consist of seven members and three alternate members, all appointed to serve... Well, then, that'll be 10 people. I'm sure we can get four on it, right? Because at seven, you'll have to have a quorum of four. All right then. We had one in here, about the finance director, that she will be, he or she, will be responsible for the operation and administration of the financial situation. I guess in this wordage in here, such an 8-17, it really didn't say with the finance director to do that. There's a typo there, somewhere is in there, when we read it, the classified service may include all officers and employees of the town, except the following, all the, it said elective or elected, and we changed it to the proper terminology, elected officers and persons appointed to fill vacancies in elected offices. Another very critical one, and maybe I'll get some clapping in hands by the selectmen and other people in the audience that are in the government. The transfer of appropriations of amounts up to $500 can be done by the department heads with the approval of the finance director. At the present time... Thank you, sir. I knew we'd get some claps. Good. At the present time, folks, what happens is, I'm a department director, and I want to change something from my grass account to my mail account, and it amounts to $35. I have to go to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, it takes you about four to six weeks. Nonsense. $500, up to $500, the department head talks to the finance director, says, look, here's what I want to do, I want to take money out of my coach's stamps and put it over here, And last but not least, let's see, the Board of Selectmen will have the discretionary authority to utilize state, federal, and other government cooperative purchasing agreements in lieu of obtaining sealed competitive bids. Right now, we have a wordage in there that... Right now, we have a wordage in there that says something about, uh, thirty-five, there's a thirty-five thousand dollar limit in there that, I guess, over thirty-five thousand dollars, they can't do it. But, we're talking, the finance director's come to our, said to me personally, that she thought we were the only town around that has that in their charter, holding the hands of our government people to not utilize these state contracts more. Now, there was some concern, in all deference to one of my absent members, Mr. Newson, he was very concerned that the town would just take the lazy way out after a while, just say, hey, we're going to state contract, state contract, and then we go out to competitive bids. Checking with the finance director, she's informed me that they're up there at the state, they check these things. And if a town starts getting lazy, and just relies on that all the time, the state will get down and tell them, whoa, you go out to bid on various, you know, don't just take the lazy means out, always state contract. Most of the time, state contracts, I guess they're the cheapest way, but there happen times that when you go out to bid, you'll even get it cheaper than what's out of state contracts. So, it's, it's, it's not a good thing just to rely on state contracts, but it does give your government the opportunity to do it without having their hands tied. Yes, sir?
You're through, I'd like to speak.
Uh, that's the twenty-fourth one, so go ahead, Mr. Single.
Thank you, Bill Single, James Vincent Drive. I want to emphasize, I'm speaking for myself. I don't know what the board of selectmen will do, but I'm gonna speak to you about, and I've written it all out to make it easy for you, informationally. These are my thoughts. Who knows what's gonna happen? So, I've, I've got two. One on the current charter that you've tuned up, and then one on the town manager. This will be on the, on the current charter with its modifications and revisions. You know, the, that guy for the UPS store, you know, related to Staples.
He's the most important.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through all of these, because some, some are rather lighter. I'll just, I went through the whole, I've been on three of these in another town, and so I thank you for your work. I know how much work it is. It gets to be really drudgery after a while. After a while, you've read it so many times, you can't even see what's on the page. But, so I thank you for that. So I just, but I found a number of things, and I think a lot of them would apply also with a town manager, but not all. But, so I'm just gonna hit a couple of them, because they're all spelled out for the Republican Well, the rig is for our voters. You talked about having it at a regular town election tonight, and I thought maybe you were trying to change it from an even number here to an odd number here.
No, we're not changing the year, at all. We're just changing the terms.
I just, I just, I think it's not clear, and that's, it's in, it's in here. The one that got a couple of applause on, in section four dash six appropriations and other actions. This idea of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you'd have to go to a town meeting. The current charter says you only have to go to a town meeting if it's over five percent of the current tax levy, which is about two and a half million dollars. That clearly is nuts, maybe. So, twenty people could show up and spend two and a half million dollars. That's clearly way too much. You can't believe this could survive this long. But on the other hand, I think two fifty is pretty low. I'm suggesting maybe something like five hundred thousand. But I do think, on the larger ticket items, the bonding and so forth, they mentioned three percent of the current tax levy makes sense. That's about a billion and a half. What else here? Uh, there's another one, five sevens on page eighteen. We wanna accept grants over fifteen thousand, we have to go to a town meeting. It doesn't seem to make any sense to me. A lot of grants are way over fifteen thousand, so I don't remember going to a town meeting. I think we had one where you only were about seventy-five grand. Maybe went to the town meeting, but I don't remember. That seems like a process that needs to be changed. Let's see here. Well, there's a couple of old things. We still use the term civil preparedness director. That's a Cold War term, by the way. It's really the emergency management director now. Then I suggest you deleted one entire section, and I just suggested you show the deleted sections, you know, you could cross something with that. So that's, that's it. That's, there's no real huge item there. Do you wanna give some other folks a chance, as long as I can do this later?
Yeah, sure. Is there anybody else who'd like to make any tactical comments on the suggested twenty-four changes to the basic, we call it the basic charter as it is, board of selectmen form? Go. Does anybody have any suggestions? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Laura Peterson, and I'm also a Clinton resident. I actually am with the selectmen in that I think that the appropriation number should be higher to go to referendum. I agree that two hundred and fifty thousand seems low. I'm not sure how much it costs to do a referendum, but I'm concerned that keeping it as low as two hundred and fifty thousand may cost the town every time we have to do that. Yes, sir?
Well, I'll give you my quick answer, as being a town official. That's the idea of it. That the town selectmen and people will think twice about running these special appropriations once every other month or so. I mean...
Oh, I totally agree. I completely understand.
Uh, you'll think twice before you, you know, you start putting, just send it in on a, on a special, on a night to come over here, have fifty people come over, raise their hands. But, we certainly will take to heart your suggestion.
Thank you.
Again, I thought two fifty was a little low, but it was brought to my attention that by some...
I have another question as well.
Department heads, yes, ma'am?
Um, does that, that doesn't apply for emergency appropriations, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
At all times, emergency, that's stipulated in the charter. Emergency situations supersede. And just so, I, I just, I'll read that one more time, because I'm not gonna try to be competitive here, but just so we clarify on this, how that reads. Section four dash six appropriations or other actions requiring referendum. A referendum shall be required for, with the exception of the annual budget, any resolution appropriating an amount over two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Two, any resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, notes, and all other forms of financing equal to three percent or more to current tax levy. See, it's two separate, two different things. Right now, that second one is five percent of the current tax levy, and Mr. Single was nice enough to throw a dollar figure on it. Right now, based on what our budgets are, current charter says five percent of the tax levy, which is around two million five hundred thousand dollars. We're, we're gonna say three percent of current tax levy, which makes sense that one million five hundred thousand is what Mr. Single is saying, as far as the issuance of bonds, notes, and other forms of, that's not appropriations of just, yes, sir?
Question, Tom Welch, one oh one, Grove Street. In regard to the first section, the two fifty section, would it be clearer if you stated not included in the budget? Because you, you said verbally that if it's in the budget, that's fine. But as you read it, it, it might be clearer to people reading it that you're talking about appropriations not included in the budget.
Alright, sir. Thank you for that suggestion.
I, I think the language is clear, though.
Okay.
I thi, I think it is. So, the way I, and I have the benefit of looking at it, so if it's two hundred and fifty, it's a quarter of a million dollars that hasn't been spoken for in the budget, then we have a referendum.
It's special, it's a special appropriations every annual. It's in addition to the regular annual budget. I think, you know, and another, you know, quite frankly, you know, in our research, some towns don't, don't know all that, eh? Capital, it's mostly always capital type of things. Again, I don't wanna pick on anybody. I was a park director fourteen years, so I'll pick on park directors. Wanna build a field, nine hundred thousand dollars. It's not too high, you know what I mean? You get, you just tell all the park people, from all the parkers come out there, and all the little leaguers and everybody else, and seventy-five people be down there on the Wednesday night, you say, yeah, we want a new park. Okay, there goes nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just on seventy-five people. What we're saying here, and I've always been a pro, even when I was on park director, that, you know, it should be all the people. Get a chance to go to the thing and say, yeah, we're gonna spend nine fifty for a park. Now, you have a chance, like I've read, and other people have read in other towns, when you have your capital plan for the beginning of the year, your capital expenditures committee would have in there, going to build a park next year. That's fine, because that'll be in the budget, and the people can see it. This is what capital intends to do this year. Build a park, buy this, buy that, that's fine. But it's the stuff during the course of the year that I think we're trying to put a little bit of a hold on. Again, no one's abused it too much, but, you know, I think the last couple of years, particularly this past year, you see that the people are, they're tightening their belts, things, things are a little tough, and the pennies count, every dollar counts, and we're trying to get a budget passed on the first time around. But anyway, um, so that's it. Sir?
Yes. I'm Bob Warner, live in Clinton. My wife and I are newbies. We retired here about a year ago, and we've been attending some of these meetings, just trying to understand what we've retired to, and what we're involved with, and my background is, has been for thirty years in helping companies eliminate waste and steps, become more efficient. The things that I'm hearing, and some of the changes you're making in here, anytime you can eliminate, somebody have to go to twenty people, sign off on thirty-five dollars, it eliminates waste, when you become, when you do that, you become more efficient. I hear the word efficiency. So some of the things that I hear that you're, with these changes are maybe provide better services, and higher quality, and less drive costs down in your organization, so I commend some of the things that I hear in there that just trigger my thoughts of step, less steps, less waste, become more efficient in the way the government is run, because waste sucks the life out of any organization. So I just hear some things that just struck me as a point of interest for what drives, drives me.
Thank you, sir. If, uh...
Mr. Single? Sir?
June eleventh, you're a quick guy, Clinton. I want to commend you and Mr. Donovan, and the other commissioner. People who haven't been following closely what's been happening in our town government in the last few years, may not appreciate the importance of some of the changes that you have suggested, but I think that you've actually run all of right files, and I think that you have pinpointed some of the things that got people quite upset about the way things are operated. And I didn't like the idea of two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit, because I think, I think, I think changes really under the years are handled, so the limitation on lame duck activity by the board of selectmen, very important. The limitation of the number of officers that we can hold, very important. I think you've done an outstanding job of trying to open up the government, make it not only look more responsive, but actually be more responsive, and I absolutely congratulate you.
Thank you, sir. Kurt?
Kurt Carr, Clinton, Connecticut. I have a couple of observations. First of all, I, I don't agree with changing this ten, section ten dash six E, and eliminating the thirty-five thousand dollar limit. It may be too low. Thirty-five thousand may not be, you know, high enough, but I know that, for example, with the police vote, which was not going out to bid, I don't think they were buying it on the state, I don't think they were buying it, but just by going out to bid, they save five thousand dollars. Just the, just the process can save you money, and it's a, it's a price discovery. And the, some of the town agencies have been ignoring this stipulation in our, in our charter for a number of years, and it was brought to their attention. I think they were a little bit aggravated by it, but I think it's a good thing to have in there, and it ought to be enforced. So I would, I would not be in favor of...
I do have a number that you would be in favor of, and you say thirty-five is too low. Give me an idea.
Well...
We had discussed it at, at one, at just about our past meeting, but...
Yeah, we did.
That we discussed a baseline, increasing just the limit. What would, what would be a suggestion?
Well, you know, it'd be interesting to know when the thirty-five thousand dollars was set, and how much things have been...
Whoa, yeah, you're right. That thing's probably been in there for...
I mean, I, I've got, I know it goes back at least to two thousand and nine.
Oh, at least.
You know, so, but...
And they didn't change it then either, because...
Right, right. So, so, you know, you'd need to know kind of what inflation was, but I think probably fifty. I might say seventy-five, but I'd really need to do some research on the, on the origin, and the date of the origin, and then look at inflation over that period of time to come up with a reasonable number. But certainly, any, absolutely not over a hundred thousand. But I, you know, I know that we bought trucks for a couple hundred thousand dollars that were not put out to bid until the board of finance said, wait a minute, this is over thirty-five thousand dollars, and clearly, that's worth the time to put it out to bid. Plus, it is a form of fairness for all the people that think they should have a chance at bidding on this. The fact that the state has put it through a process is just not adequate, you know, for those large numbers. Another thing that's in here that I noticed, that, um, I noticed, this is in section eight dot thirteen, dash thirteen, that the planning and zoning commission hires the zoning enforcement officer, but in section eight dash fourteen, police department, it doesn't indicate who hires the police chief. It says that, it basically says that they will, that the police commission will direct the, the chief of police, but there has been some controversy about who has the authority to hire, and then also, who has the authority to, to negotiate the contract. And those are two different things that I think that the, that the, that the charter ought to be clear on, that even if, if the police commission can hire the police chief, that the negotiation is still done by the board of selectmen, if that is the intent. That seems to be the way it's been interpreted, and I think it would be good to have it clarified in this. Also, on the last page, and I, under the red, I don't understand some of these markings, but under the red marking, the second red marking, it seems to indicate that this is going to be...
What section is that in?
This is in the very back, under eleven dash three, referendum effective date.
Eleven dash three?
Yeah, it's at the very back.
We don't know the date yet, so it was just highlighted, so when we put it in, I just put a nineteen date in there, so we know that we have to change it.
Okay, but I mean, I think the thing is, is your intent now is to do it this year, right? Not next year?
Right. No.
No, no, but I mean, to have the, to have the...
It'd be effective November nineteenth of two thousand and nineteen.
Right, but...
Yeah, but the election year would be twenty...
Yes, right on the election.
Right now, the election year in here, under the red...
You're right on that, yep.
Says twenty nineteen.
But that's why it's highlighted, because we have to...
I understand, but I think it's, I think it's highlighted, but it's one of those things like a TBD that didn't, it sort of slipped through. The only other thing that, on both of these, I'd like to just hand out some information. I'd like to make the case that our process for funding in Clinton, which is probably not unlike other towns, has not been doing this, been doing this for a number of years, has demonstrated... has not been, uh, doing this, doing this, 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 for a number of years, as demonstrated by the number of referendum budget defeats that we had. Now, I've given you a, um, a graph that shows the amount that's proposed each year. And what was ultimately passed collectively, about four million dollars has been taken out of the budget over this period of time because of budget referendum defeats. Um, in that time, even after these budget referendum defeats, there's another graph that shows taxes and compares those taxes with leading household income, with average household income, with averaging income and with, uh, and, and the number of households. And as you can see, the, even after, and I understand this is after we have the previous budgets, the, the taxes have gone up much faster than the government had to pay them. And then I also indicate, gave you a comparison of Clinton taxes compared to the consumer pricing tax. So what I'm suggesting is that we need to think of a different way of budgeting than we had in the past that considers the context of the economic framework of the town, has a strategic plan that it follows and sets some objectives that works backwards from what you want to achieve with this budget rather than having people come in and look at the bottom line. So I've given you a reimagined process and the attachment of how budgeting might be done in, in that kind of a scenario. And it's a draft, uh, it's a suggestion of a different way of budgeting. And this would apply whether you had a town manager or you had a, I don't know, or the, yeah, or Board of Finance. And the current is to reestablish the budget process.
Is there anything in this particular draft, though, that could be put into a chart?
It is, it is written as a draft or charter language, but obviously it would take some work if you need to look at it.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Carr, are there other towns that use this financial controlling agency authority in itself under, uh, under, do they work under the appointment of the Town Council? How's that?
Well, without knowing what, in this case, it's the legal beginning defines it as either the Board of Finance or the Town Council, depending on whatever your form of government is. So I put in a generic, uh, uh, group name so that depending on whatever it is, whether it's Board of Finance. And when we get to the, to the, uh, Town Manager, some other comments in there. But this would apply generally.
Thank you.
I, I had a question for Mr. Carr, I would say.
Well, again, see Laurie, what we're trying not to do is have a bench between individuals in the audience.
Okay, then I have a point.
It's a point to the chair?
Yeah.
As to the commission, fine.
So, um, my point would be, I mean, after listening, um, to the suggestions, I think it's really important when you're talking about economic parameters that, um, those things get said very, very carefully. Because I know that, you know, things like mean or average could be a median or could be a mean and they're very, very different. And, um, there are a lot of times when you can get screwed. So I think that we need to be really careful about that.
It, just to sort of alleviate anybody's concerns about it and all due respect and Mr. Carr, I respect, you know, his information and all. I would say that this board right now is enough to handle with what we have on our plate. And I've said, because as you know, there's been different things in the paper suggested that, oh, a charter should do this now, whoa, 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 whoa. We are at a timeline that we have to turn this into the selectmen, by state statutes, and then they have to give it back to us for review and then we have to get it printed for the people to read by election time. So any major changes to like how we establish tax levies or change the quota for how many people to show up for votes and stuff like this, I've said to many people, I'd be the first person to tell the new government, whatever it is, immediately convene a charter revision commission of financial experts, if you will, people of that nature and do an in-depth study of how we should revamp the steps that we take in this town for establishing a budget and planning of taxes. But certainly, all suggestions, Mr. Carr, are welcome.
Thank you.
And we will, we will look at it. If there's something that possibly we can pick from it, we would, but.
So a question of clarification then? So the information that was submitted to you is not particularly actionable at this point in the timeline?
At this particular, I wouldn't think so because first of all, there's no proposals here.
Okay.
If there was, that's why I asked Mr. Carr that question. If there were some proposals here to say, "Do this, do this, and put this in a charter," we could take that up at our next meeting and look it over and say, "Hey, I know we have some." But it, right now, we would have to probably devise, again, talking with financial people, uh, I keep a little bit above my pay scale.
Do our.
And, uh.
Right, it would, it would require much more.
It's gonna take some work, but I do appreciate Mr. Carr, you know, submitting this and he has all the rights to do so. But go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. I still live on James Smith's drive. Couple of points that were raised and I'll through the chair. Uh, I can assure you the Police Commission hires the police chief. Uh, in my time here, we hired Chief Todd Laurie. And then we hired Chief Vincent De Mayo. And I think that's in state statute. But it sure wasn't hurt if he was in the charter to sort of make it clear because it wasn't clear a minute ago. So that's, there'd be no harm in doing that. Clearly, that's the body that's hiring the chief.
So that would be a new one for me, quite frankly, uh, Mr. Single. Because I'd always thought the Board of Selectmen and the First Selectmen do all the hiring. You, they take the recommendations of the Police Commission.
I'm using the wrong term.
Okay. The Police Commission itself just can't hire a police chief.
We, Police Commission selects the chief, a chief candidate from among a search process.
Yep.
And then that person, yes, is put forward, in our case, to the Board of Selectmen. And they could either ask us to put a draft contract or they can do it themselves.
Correct.
The way this works at the time I've been here, uh, the Commission produced a draft contract and then it had to go to Board of Selectmen to be either altered and/or approved at some point. But we, we could select, any people get promoted to the department, et cetera, as the Police Commission would. So.
Thank you.
Uh, as to.
So we will, we'll, I, I think some clarification probably is, a little cleanup in the language would hurt.
As to that thirty-five thousand dollar item, uh, I personally would not be opposed to putting the number back in, but I would certainly want to hire. I was thinking always along the lines of a hundred thousand dollars. If that number is decades old, uh, it's probably at least worth a hundred thousand today. And, uh, you know, a lot of things that are more, uh, routine products, you're buying sand, you're buying asphalt, buying paper, you know, you don't want to have to lock seal bits all the time. But, uh, it seemed to me that'd be a, some kind of a reasonable number there. Where, because it is true on the state bid lists, and it was true to when we bought, when the town bought this, call it a hook lift truck. When it finally went out to bid, the bidder beat the state price. So state price is kind of a maximum. Now, many times, you know, we don't buy enough, uh, sand, uh, asphalt, uh, whatever it might be to get a good price for sealed bits. That's why you go to the state because they buy it so it's value. There's basically one, one to a sealed bit. So maybe a number like a hundred cameras will be fine with me anyway.
Well, just in, in reference, when we give this to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen can't make recommendations to them to make these changes. And that's what we'll be hoping for, is that we didn't think we wrote the Constitution of the United States to exist, us seven people, you know. We, we did pretty good research and stuff like that, but certainly we'll be looking for some guidance from the Board of Selectmen on some changes like that.
Forgot to reiterate, I'm speaking for myself. Now, I did go through the Town Manager document you produced, were finding, I did it on both of them. And of course, I, I wrote down what I found, reflecting my own opinion.
Can I just interrupt you one moment?
Certainly.
Is there anybody else that have any comments about the regular basic charter?
I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
Who was to hire the zoning enforcement officer?
Right now, I believe it's in, in this, in the existing charter, I believe it's the Board of Selectmen or I think it's.
Planning and zoning.
The Planning and Zoning Officer, did you say?
Correct.
Right now, the Planning and Zoning Commission hires in the present, uh, charter.
I'd like to suggest that that be, um, you know, put through the Board of Select, Selectmen as well.
We, we, thank you. Michael?
Uh, Mike Duff, I'm a resident from Allen Road. Uh, I'm not in disagreement with adding a number to the state bid thing, but I think you should at least have language in there that allows that the state bid does beat the bid price that you can get. You should be allowed to do state bidding. There's a lot of major corporations that won't allow local vendors to underbid a state bid if they bid it out, especially with EDU pricing. And I know they ran into, a few despots ran into an issue with Tilcon where Tilcon said, "We're not gonna bid. We put up state bid and he couldn't beat it." So I'm not opposed to the number, but there should at least be an avenue that if the state bid actually is in fact cheaper, that you should be able to do that.
Thank you, Michael. All right, uh.
Can I just run through the.
Well, I'm gonna try to get, if we're all done with the basic changes in the charter, we'll now go to Town Manager Form.
Okay. Sir, I'm sorry, go ahead, go Eric first, then I'll.
I just wanted to say through you, just to put it on record, we did consider looking at an RTM model, like just how they do it in Ranford Water. I think it's a wonderful system, just a meeting every single week for the last five months, but it seems like simply we don't have the time for it. So I would recommend that we recommend to the Board of Selectmen and when they convene this again, that they really take a serious look at the RTM model. I think there's a lot of merit to that. I just wanted to put that out there.
Very welcome, thank you.
Sure.
RTM.
Uh, representative town meeting, uh, town is divided into districts. There's an elected body from each of those districts and they, uh, increase the number of people involved in the town. Uh, quite a lot of oversight without the inefficiencies. Uh, it'll take a little bit of time to explain it in more detail, but I think there's quite a bit of merit to it.
Instead of having a Board of Selectmen, you have a representative town council. Ranford, I believe, has got a thirty-three member once. An individual came to us early in our process and told us, I guess it was a town on Fairfield County that has like ninety-nine members. So now, you know, uh, it's a bit much for Clinton, that's almost every, almost every town here. But story short is that it wasn't all done early in the process, but again, that is a concept that really needs to be studied because you're talking, like I said, changing to thirty. Quite frankly, we had all we could do to grasp and investigate this Town Manager Form of Government uh, and put, uh, put that to, to rest. But it was suggested to us by some individuals and, uh, I guess Eric wants to make sure that those people, we just didn't snub it, throw it out the door and say, "Hey." We, we gave it a look, but we realized that it was a little bit.
Too much to.
Just commenting on that, when you're done. I just wanted to, uh, Kirk, you mentioned the, um, the state statute for the Board of Finance.
Yes.
It says in the statute to establish, once it's been approved, to establish the, uh, Board of Finance, uh, they shall elect six or put six taxpayers in place. The town in Gilbert has, does have seven Board of Finance, so, uh, we'd be joining them if, um, we're wrong. So, so, and I don't, I know that, um, Bennett did look at this as well, so we're, we would not be the only one that has the seven Board of Finance.
Thank you.
And it does say established, it doesn't say anything else in there saying you can't have five or seven.
That's the way I read it. I know the last year you and I looked at such, that came up and was that our founding fathers decided you at least had to start with six when you establish one, but you could go more. Matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, the founder of the town had nine.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so have you no more other questions, I guess, with the basic form of government, which we have now, Town Select, I don't know why you say basic. The form of government we have right now, which is Select. We are through with that question of the hearing. We will now go into the Town Manager Form of, uh, Government and we're open to questions from the floor. Go ahead, or comments?
Okay, well, I went through all the things I said. I'm just gonna pick up some of the highlights they, they have written, what I wrote up on it. Uh, section three dash four, Treasurer. A Treasurer, as we know, is elected. And I, I don't know why that is. Seems like that should be an appointed position or a hired position because, you know, we've been maybe pretty lucky with Treasurers we've elected, but when we elect people, and there's no job requirements for any elected position other than you've got to be voted. So it just seems to me that a position that important should have some qualifications and maybe it shouldn't be elected. Now, maybe there's a statute that says it has to be, I don't know. But I'm just questioning why we elected Treasurer. Your proposal on Board of Police Commissioner alternates, I have no issue with that. It would suggest so that you change it. And I suggested some language here, so they have overlapping terms.
Right.
And, and it can't be from the same party.
Right.
That's the other thing. The registrar of voters.
Always, always different.
The registrar of voters, the way it was written, I couldn't decide if you were trying to push it to a town election uh, as opposed to the way it is now at a state election. Going on four years is fine. So I just suggest that, you know, instead of calling it a town election, it's called a state election, which is, which is even number of years. Back to the appropriation thing, I think the two-fifties, two-wells, like, same time for the other charter proposal. Let's see. Oh, well, this is kind of a big one for me. You require that a Town Manager's contract can only be three years long. I think you need to trust the Town Council that they will have enough discretion and sense about it to do the right thing. If, if I were there when the first managers hired, I would probably want a shorter contract. But let's say you hire somebody and they turn out to be fantastic. The next time around, or maybe the next time around after that, you probably want to give him a five, him or her, a five-year contract and they'll probably be asking for it. And I know there's some towns that after a while, they don't have a contract, they just, just roll on. But I think to make it a hard three years, no matter what, is, you need some flexibility, I, I would say.
So you would suggest that it would be up to the Town Council to determine the what?
In here, I said, "Well, why don't you make it two to five years? At least give some flexibility." I wouldn't make it a hard three years here. I just would. And particularly, if you're bringing somebody who doesn't live in, in driving distance, you know, to get them to move here and buy, hopefully buy a house here for a three-year contract, you know, that might block you. Just a little flexibility, I think. I think you gotta trust the Town Council to do the right thing and to, uh, protect the town and give an appropriate contract. And don't forget, you're gonna negotiate a contract that has out clauses, termination clauses, all that sort of thing. It could be a very long and complicated contract.
Quickly through you, Mr. Chair, we did see some towns in which this was abused where the, uh, certain members of the Board of Selectmen were in so-called cahoots with the Town Manager and they didn't have those out, those clauses where they would get rid of that particular person. And they've said this is just excruciating to wait these terms out. So I think that's part of our rationale in determining.
It was part of it, yeah.
Well, I think in their contract, they definitely would have a way to get out, but they're not gonna be cost free, obviously, but there ought to be a way to get out.
Again, that'll be your job, Mr. Single, in the Board of Selectmen. If the people voted, then you'll have eight or nine months to draw up the contract when you're ready.
It'd be somebody's job, I think. Let's see, there's a, uh, some language stuff here, let's see. On, there's a section eight dash three on page twenty. There's a section eight dash three, I think it's twenty-three, about removal of the town manager. It talks about having a public hearing to address that issue. And I think, I think the town manager should have the option of having a public hearing or a private hearing, and being brought up on charges of something that may be a term of offense. I know that police officers appear in dismissal process. They have the right to either have a hearing in public or private. And, uh, I don't know if it would do us any good to have all that dirty laundry out in public, although that's probably, in a theoretical sense, the right thing to do. You might, you might wanna consider that. Well, again, I picked up that the, anything over a fifteen thousand dollar grant you got out of town meeting, I think that's, that's even worse than a thirty-five grand, as far as you can go. And the rest of this is language that I thought was easier. Not clear, I gave you this, not so just a change, that's about it. I, originally, I initially think about term limits, I think that's a totally good idea. I also think town employees, not only likely officers, unlikely officers in the town government. And I don't think people who are board of executives should be able to run through a board of education. I don't know if they're prohibited by state statute on that, so, those two things are included.
Thank you. Uh, if you, if you want folks, just maybe help the situation. I'll give you a brief overlay real quickly, if I can, Art, pre-step up any time, because, like I said, you know this thing better than I do. Uh, we'll just give you an idea of just how this town manager thing is gonna work. Now, first of all, Mr. Carter's question from before on the present form. Town manager will hire and fire all people, okay? Including that zoning officer, police chief. He hires and fires everyone, okay? He himself can get fired, he or she can get fired, by a five to two vote in the town council. Now, let me clarify that, too. We're gonna get away from this thing about the Board of Selectmen. I think that would cause a lot of confusion the last time around, when we had the town manager and the Board of Selectmen went through people's vote, we still had a first selectman, and blah, 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 blah. That's all gone. This would be a town manager and a seven-member town council. Town council would be elected to get started. The highest four members that they get voted would be elected to a four-year term. The lower three on the initial election would be a two-year term. Thereafter, it would always be four years. So every two years, you have an elected, election of some town council people, but you'll never have a drastic change until the whole board's gone. You'll always have some consistency between three, four, three, four, so that your government, yes, sir?
Would there be any salary for the town council?
Uh, salary for the town, the stipend, it'll be called stipend, only a thousand dollars a year for six members. The chairperson of the town council, which is voted by the town council, by the way, the council would vote their own chairperson. He would get, he or she would get fifteen hundred dollars a year. Reason, they'll have a couple extra duties. As chairperson of the council, he is the ceremonial chief officer of the town in regards to military parades, ceremonies, things of that nature. So we felt that individual, he or she, should get a little bit extra in the stipend. He's gonna have a little bit extra duties to do rather than the regular town council. Thank you for that question.
Very good.
So, again, we have a top, just sir.
But the, the town council members are elected from the towns as a whole, not from the district?
That's correct. Just, just the way Board of Selectmen is now.
Very important.
All right.
One of these two don't forget. There's a part about the, he said that the town manager hires and fires everybody with approval of the town council.
With the approval of the town council.
And the manager report, he's gonna get into that, I mean. Go, that's right.
No, that's okay, I'm glad, all input. I, I don't wanna miss, I don't wanna miss a thing, 'cause the people here, if you go away with a question and it, we haven't done our job. I wanna be able to make sure that you all have.
Is the majority vote on the town council the firm personnel position of the town manager, or does it specify something higher than the majority? The town council has to affirm the majority of the votes of the-
It's only just a majority, four, three. The only, the only thing would be firing him, that's a five, two. That's the only majority that's different, that's a five, two. And, by the way, uh, we didn't just think of these numbers, believe me. Every one of these ladies and gentlemen here at this table picked towns that had town manager, town council forms of government, read their charters, came back, ripped stuff. This is a, I'm not gonna brag about it, but, this is a compilation of, we think, the best stuff from a lot of towns. Uh, we try to focus on towns our size, thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand people. There are other towns in this state that have town councils, but they're much bigger, forty, thirty, fifty thousand people. It doesn't relate to us. So we looked at East Hampton, for instance, Killingley, Sims Berry, Sims Berry's, uh, and tried to pull out. So, you have your manager, he's gonna do, he's gonna do your actual day-by-day operation of the town. And as Art brought up, major decisions, things of that nature, always will be with council approval. Let's go to the budget form we go-
Could I just follow up on that?
Sure.
You said the town manager hires and fires everybody.
Right.
But I wanna make sure that, say, and I'll make this up as an example, within Public Works, the head of Public Works feels that someone on his staff needs to be fired. He in turn is then gonna come to the town manager and propose the firing, and then the town manager will execute the firing?
Uh, yes, but, you know, let me just put it this way. Right now, Public Works is a union, so you're gonna go all through the steps of whatever union and arbitration, you know, you'll have to go with the, the written, uh, they give, there's not five steps before you actually get to the, to the firing of an individual. You have to give warnings, written warnings, verbal warnings, blah, blah, blah. Brought in administrative hearings in front of the town. But, yes, ultimately, I mean, if, if at some point in time, uh, they had enough evidence against an employee, yes, you would go to the town manager, who would recommend him being fired, again, with the approval of the town council. Town council will approve the firing and the hiring. Um, go ahead, Art.
Actually, in the document here, the town manager, it's only stated the department heads. You don't get, the charter does not get into subordinates within the department. I don't know how that's handled in the department, I don't want to disprove anyone.
Okay.
Did it just-
That's a good point.
That makes more sense.
It don't handle in the-
Then he's not going down, way down in the organization.
I don't know how that can, in the charter, it's only about-
Like I said, the union is on most of that. Yes, uh-
James.
I'm sorry, James.
James Kelly Wells from Allen Road. I think personally that if you, if you, the town manager and the council hire a police chief, then he ought to run his department. Or if you hire the department of Public Works head, then he ought to run his department. And he knows better than the town manager who's good and who isn't. I mean, if you, if you hire a, a good person, then you should give him the leeway, you know? What are you gonna say every time you need something? You gotta come to the town council. I don't know. I think that's a problem a lot of times now.
I just think that Art just said, clarified that.
Okay.
You can only obtain two before the department heads.
You have to give them that.
The, the, that's what I mean.
Good.
The only process I have some, you know, real understanding of is at the police department. And if an officer, you know, gets in trouble, and gets in trouble again and so forth, there are all these steps of this and that.
That's correct.
You start out with, as you say, the warnings, verbal, written, you have a meeting, uh, goes into the record, and then it can evolve to a one-day suspension, five-day, whatever, it goes all the way up to like thirty days. And then, you can discharge, but it has to be approved by the police commission before you can discharge the person. So, I think it's the same thing with the town manager in that, if the town manager wants to discharge somebody, it's probably already gone through the union steps.
Correct.
But then, the town council's gonna have to approve the discharge.
That is correct.
The only exception to that for the police chief is that the town manager, it says in his charter draft, that the town manager could fire the police chief with the approval of the police commission.
Correct.
And I think that's the correct way.
Correct. In case people didn't know, and, I mean, police commissions have a lot more authority granted by state statute than what they used to have in this town charter. State statutes in general grant and have a whole vast amount of special, uh, rules, regulations pertaining to police commissions. So that's why we specified that, that difference about the police commission. Just so I don't get off the track, I wanted to get to the important function, which I'm sure everybody's, uh, very interested in, and that is how a town, a town budget would operate. The manager would prepare the budget. He would prepare the budget in consultation with the finance director, he or she. They make the town budget. They do this after they've had all the meetings of all the town department heads, whatever. He establishes a budget. He gives it to the town council. The council looks at it, the council says, "Yeah, looks pretty good." Send it to the people for referendum. Always remember that, folks. The people will vote on the final referendum of budget. Now, there are some towns, there are not too many, where the town manager, his thing is boss, that's it. There's other places that if the council says, "Yay," it's it. I think you might have read about them, a couple of them, I guess, are current. Some people are upset. "Town council gave us a four percent increase," blah, 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 they're all going crazy. No, no. In this town, we will still hold that. The budget will be blown down by the people. Okay, so let's say, the manager gives it to the council, the council says, "Aye," that's a kind of flag, they give it back, they make recommendations, say, "I think maybe you could do this and this." They give it back to that town manager. He lives and dies with that budget. It's his job that's on the line with this. He tunes it up, and he gets it back, and he says, "Okay," send it to the people. Goes to the people, let's say, gets the feeding. Gets the feeding, some towns, however, goes to the council, the council make all the changes. We're making it, we're, we're doing a little different. Goes back to the council, who then turns it back to that manager, says, "There, your budget failed, bud. Clean it up. You're the guy that's getting whatever you're getting, you're the man. Get this right, so that we can give back to the people." So, and, is there any comments to that at this point? Yays or nays? How do you, how, how do you feel about it? Go ahead, please.
I just think, you know, we traditionally give it to the departments, and they build it from the bottom up. And then sometimes, and maybe this past year was an example, I wish that someone at the top leadership would said, say to the department heads, before they start this bottom-up building, is, "Look, you gotta come in with no more than a one percent increase over last year." So that they don't waste that time. When we listened to the Board of Education, they were telling us the hours that they had put into that budget. And I'm sure they, they did, but that's because they got no direction from the top, that you can't come in with a four or five percent increase. You're gonna have to hold us to no more than a one percent increase. And now, now go build your budget. And don't let them waste all that time saying, "We'd like this, we'd like this, we'd like this," and then find out, it just gets kicked back to them. I just think we need direction from the top, and it might change year to year. I mean, if we get revenue-paying commercial properties at the old Morgans, we might have more revenue in the future, but right now, it's all on the backs of the homeowners.
Okay, we're just trying to talk about the concept now of how this would go, town manager to council, to the people, rejection in the bottom up. How, how's that flow going? Go ahead, Laurie.
Um, question about, you said there's some, some towns where it doesn't go to a referendum. How many, uh, in, in the manager set up, how many towns don't have a referendum alone?
I don't know that off the top of my head, Laurie. I would say there's, right now, I think, Art correctly, there's probably right now, on one hundred and sixty-nine towns in Connecticut, thirty-nine towns with some form of town manager. Uh, I would say there's probably a little more than six or eight of them that are, almost like, almost the same. Everybody has a little tweak here, there, and everywhere, like a hybrid. It's a growing thing, it's a new thing, that's, you know-
But most, but some of them at least have referendums in addition, and it's not-
A lot of them still have, like we are proposing, referendums. Most of them do. But there are, there were a couple, and we won't name them, that don't.
They don't.
They just, they just, the town council or the town managers, word is fine.
Does that make sense? Some, some only go to town, they, they don't just approve it, they go to a town meeting. Like Westbrook went to a town meeting, and people would say, "Who?" But some, rather than having a referendum, or just having a council or a town manager, would, they at least have the town meeting. Of course, you get a much slower turnout, generally speaking, yeah? But, you know, that's another wrinkle.
There's so many variations.
Sir, in the back?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, quick question. You said a seven-committee town council.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't believe that I heard, but is that how many Democrats, how many Republicans, or is it just the highest vote, so you could have seven Republicans?
You, you still have, you'll always read the front of this charter. My representative party is always mandated. In other words, you have four, you'll have no more than four Republicans or four Democrats. As much as you can have.
Okay.
You can't have a supermajority of five and two. It's four and three, just like our Board of Selectmen is now, three and two. Uh, this would be four and three.
So therefore-
Four from any one party.
So basically, when you said, um, the chairman of the committee would be elected by the committee.
That's correct.
So therefore, we-
From the council.
From that four.
From that-
From that people.
From that seven people.
From that seven people.
So theoretically, you could believe whoever the four were, right?
Probably.
Okay.
That's probably what you have.
And one other question. Um, most, um, towns, no, I'm sorry, most businesses and stuff that have these massive budgets do have very high-educated people running them, CEOs, and this, that. What kind of number is the committee thinking to hire a town manager?
I'm sorry.
Price-wise, like what would the salary number?
That would be left up to the town, the Board of Selectmen. I'll, I mean, I'll throw up some numbers at you, okay?
Yeah, well, I'm sure you guys know what they are for-
Yeah, I mean, we've heard, we've heard numbers that you probably have to go about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's probably a starting rate for a town manager. But remember, though, you're losing the salary of the first elect.
Yep.
So that takes a little bit of this thing out of it. But, uh, some towns, you know, they're a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty, I mean, you know.
Depending on how-
I wanna also say this, two or three towns I investigated last year, one had the same town manager for twenty-four years. So you talk about consistency, about a guy doing his job. And, and that's, that was another point I wanted to stress when you're, when you're preparing budgets. I talked to the fire department, okay? I'm the town manager. We sit down, and they say to me, "Well, this is how we would like to go. All right, here's what we're on the team. I think we can do this, 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 and year five, we should be here." Now, if I'm doing my job, I'll probably be here in year five to see Chief gets to where he belongs. I don't have to worry about popularity contests, I can vote it out in two years.
Right.
You know?
Yep, yep.
And so sometimes, you know, that's how, you know, and, and so, anytime, ladies, guys, you know, please speak up. I know they're, "Oh, I don't know, they don't wanna say." They're all, "Through the chair, through the chair, lift the chair, let them talk." Because I, I guess I was big mom. But anyway, yeah, good, thank you very much. Well, you know, so, that's one of the features we feel that is a benefit to establishing the budget, as that gentleman said. You're gonna have one man, and hopefully, he's gonna be around, and he's gonna be here for a long time, and he's gonna say, you know, this is like this gentleman said, a CEO, he's gonna be a CEO of the town. He will operate this thing.
That's right.
And, bing, 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 and, and, and... So, that's the concept of why we feel that this, you know, town manager thing could work. You're gonna, you're gonna bring a level of professionalism, business, whatever, to the top spot, to the man that's gonna call the shots.
Or woman.
Or woman, I'm sorry. Any type, if there's any two people. Mary, Joe, or Liz. She, he, or she. Lynn.
Congratulations on all this hard work.
Thank you. Well, Lynn, you've been here last year with this, you did sixteen months with the prior commission, and she did a lot of investigation. I might say that we used a lot of material that Lynn had brought forth to this committee. Uh, when she was on the commission last year, we started up in two sixteen, we had eighteen months of that commission.
I just agree with this, and I have to say, I haven't yet, but I just had a question. Have you put, um, uh, any percentage of the voter, um, on the vote for the budget?
No, we did not. Although that came up in the late, last week or two, again, we thought, that's, that's a dollywack that really has to be thought through, and a whole separate bunch of individuals, uh, you know, a little higher scale can get together and come up with that concept. For, you know, another thing, I, I want to make sure everybody understands. Statute says you must give me a charter commission every, in five years. You can have one every year, sometimes you have. So if there's enough of a necessity to, as I said before, before you came here, Lynn, that there are a lot of new, we've some, we've heard a lot of stuff come out within the last week or so, people, "Can you get every lift?" No, no, because we're not gonna just put something in here at the end that hasn't been vetted. You know, we, we've checked this all stuff out, and people, like I said, the, the amount of time that these people put, it, it's amazing. They all have these things here, they're all sharp as tacks here, and they come every week, and they go, "I read this town, that town, this town," and it's amazing. But, um, so I, I would think, like I said, no matter what happens, that'd be one of our first steps in a new government.
We did find one town, I did read into it, one town that did use a voter percentage. Um, and actually, the referendum, um, failed at F O, but it passed automatically because they didn't reach the amount of the percentage. Farmington, Farmington, the percentage was like ten percent of the population.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we get thirty percent here.
Oh.
So you would have to do like some stupid, very high, like fifty percent. So, uh, I don't think it would work. My work in Westbrook, they get like five hundred people.
Right, right.
But it's not gonna work. I mean, you know, three, I, I think their vote in Farmington was like three twenty-nine to two twenty-nine, failed, but it passed. Because four point nine percent of the town.
Well, sir, the chairman asked if we liked the process or we don't, and I've always been in favor of town management. What I like about it, and I suggest other people may like about it, is you really know who's responsible for how things are running at this state. Town manager and a seven-member council. The way we have it today, with the first selectman, the board of selectmen, and the board of finance, you know, I've seen it happen where it's kicked down to somebody else to make the hard decision. It's gonna go right back to this council, and the town manager, and they're not gonna say, "Well, that was the board of finance," or, you know, somebody else. You know who's in charge, who's making the decisions, who to blame or who to correct.
Exactly.
It depends.
To, to his point, one other thing that I think is highlighted in here somewhere is that the town council can only talk to the town manager, and the town council cannot go to anybody in the town, any of the departments to talk to them. Can't go to the department.
Yes, very important, thank you.
Can't go over here, can't go to that person, has to go to the town manager.
Another company.
There's no, there's one...
A council member doesn't grab the part, the board of directors, says, "Tomorrow, I want you to cut the green, and I want you to..."
Or, you know, mark the red or anything, so...
He goes through the...
Right, it's, it's, that's the only rule, in theory.
Jane.
It, does the, excuse me, the separation of the board of ed in the budgets and the town remain the...
Yes, it is.
So, is the town manager then in charge of the board of ed budget?
No, no. It's still, it's still state statute, board of ed, board of ed.
Oh, it is a system.
They're, uh, but you would hope. And I, and I believe, no, I believe that, you know, sometimes it's easier, you're the town manager, we're the board of ed, right? We get our, we get our budget together, we come and talk with you, and you say to me, you say to us, "Hey, come on, I'm holding town side down to this, this, and this, can you people help me out here?" But I, I, I would think the working relationship could be built, particularly when it's one individual, you know? And, you know, at least we would hope that, you know, Jane, the better, the better of all. Yes, Laurie?
So the board of finance disappears, decides to run the, uh, the finance director. The finance director is...
Finance director's still on.
But the board of finance is...
Board of finance is eliminated. And, and, believe it or not, and maybe, and I'll just say, members of the board of finance have said they're happy with, or not happy with, but they agree with.
That also...
They think it's a necessity that, it probably, you know, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
We didn't need any friction from them.
That's also the increase in the town council, I don't know what's to count for that.
You just need a really good finance director, which we've had two really good ones, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the key, you're right.
Can you get higher?
Yes, sir.
This all, all boils down to not, uh, a school budget or the town budget, boils down to serving leadership for the good of the whole, and that is the community and benefactors that are each citizen that lives here. And I think that where you're heading with these things, this process, and it's basically with a town manager, it's more like running it like a business with, with accountability, up and down, and responsibilities, and that provides the best opportunity to serve the best interests of the customers, and the customers are the citizens, businesses, and tourism in this town. And that, that's what it really all has to boil down, and all comes to push the shelf. The town manager piece is more like running it like a business.
And consistency. So you don't have somebody learning their job every two years.
Exactly, exactly.
Nope.
And I cited that chair awesome. Not bragging, but I was on the board of selectmen, yes, and you're right, Jane. You sit there the first couple of months, and you're trying to absorb.
Yeah.
How, how's this work? You know, blah, 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 blah. And the next thing you know, your time is up, you know?
And then somebody else sits there.
There you go. So, this, no, Liz.
And the town manager is somebody who has credentials.
Yes.
Has a degree in public services, and maybe has MBA.
And knows contacts.
And has contacts, and can make these decisions, and there's continuity.
And has a record, hopefully, of managing a town.
And knows the town.
You would hope that, yes, you would hope that. In the back, yes, sir?
David Fisher. First question, where did the idea come from to propose a town manager form of government? And the second question is, does that board endorse the idea? Is that part of your, thank you all for your service, Laurie, a big deal, no doubt. It's like, but where did the idea of a town manager come from? And the simple question is, as a board, are you empowered to endorse it, or are you denying it?
Eric?
No, Eric, Eric's reading.
Eric, where did it come? I'm not gonna give an overview, I mean, it comes from, the first town, I believe, was in Virginia years ago, like, first town... No, he means, who, why, where, why did that? Who, why, why? I've done preface, a little history lesson, but...
It was gonna be a teacher, now, English.
I don't, I mean, I think we, when we were appointed to the previous commission, we asked a lot of folks, and it bounced around, that some towns are doing this, and it eliminates a lot of political impeding and whatnot, so we bounced around last commission, something happened, and go forward, and then it came up again, this commission. So I think that's, uh, it's been discussed, I think most charter revisions probably at some point at least discussed it, we just seem to have, grew here, wanted to push it forward.
I was on it ten years ago.
And we had a lot of interest, I mean, you know, two years ago, we had some, we, you know, when it started in two sixteen, believe it or not, that was a, an eighteen, sixteen month charter. Eric was on it, Eric and myself. Go ahead.
I heard a first one forty years ago from Hart Stegan, who was chairman of the board of ed.
Oh, okay, there you go.
It's been around a while.
It's been around, but it's just somehow evolved a couple of years ago, it grew.
Nationally.
Well, so, my point is that I'm in defense of politics. I'm in defense of politics. I'm of the mind that we have a system for a very long time, which elevates somebody to be the boss. And as an observation, it's a nice story to talk about accomplishment and so forth, and the right person, and this and that, but we lose out on the benefits of politics. For example, we have the two parties, Democrats and Republicans, and periodically, one team gets a wave, maybe the wave goes all the way to the governor's office, and those on that team down the line sometimes benefit. And they have noticed Hartford magically got the state government to drop five-hundred-million-dollar debt because of the teamwork. So I'm not advocating for one team or the other, I just think that part of this discussion removes the benefit of politics and having a boss. And so when we talk about changing the system, I'm not mistaken, I think William Kelsey was one of our select men in sixteen seventy-nine. It makes me wonder, and not to take a position one way or the other, Mr. Donovan gave me a very good discussion the other day about the benefits of town manager, and I thought about it a lot, and most of it was logical. But these conversations about expertise and so forth, I think character is why we have the government America we have. We pick people regardless of their IQ or degrees, the people who we agree with in character to say, "Lead us." So I ask the question, I get the idea town manager is in the air, I get that, and I appreciate the idea that the town manager would be subject to removal by a five-two vote, so there is that authority. But I just want to emphasize, there is also a benefit to politics, which could injure the community.
You never eliminate, David, politics completely, because you're gonna have a council that is made up of four of one party and three of the other.
If we have a Republican first selectman or a Democratic first selectman, and the folks in Hartford are Republican or Democrat, very often, benefits accrue.
You have a point.
That's my point.
That's one of the benefits, you have a point.
Who's in charge?
Republican governor, legislature of a whole new Republican town, right before a Democrat or vice versa. That, that's a lot.
If I could just speak to the question, I, my name is Stephanie Patterson, and I grew up in Clinton, my dad was the first electman in the sixties, and I think that the notion of a town manager has been on the hearts and minds of many of the leaders in this community for many, many years, because running a town is a really complicated endeavor, and there's value to hiring somebody who is professionally trained to do that, who develops a track record doing that. Clinton has been suffering for many, many years with a struggling tax base, losing our factories, losing a lot of revenue streams, and we need, I mean, as, as I look back at my time when I was a practicing attorney many years ago, I used to look at Guilford and say, "Well, they have a town manager, they have zoning, other communities have things that are going, they have, they have growth," and Clinton hasn't had that because of a variety of circumstances that have come up. But it's really time for us to look at this as a defining time for the community to move forward, so that we can grow an economic base and eliminate the partisan nature of politics, which is not accomplishing a lot for everybody, and that's why so many, that's why this group has been working on this for a couple of years.
To you, Mr. Chairman, did the board of selectmen kick out the gas plant? Did the board of selectmen kick out the recycling plant?
The people. They get off the subject.
Well, the point is the value of politics, that's all I'm saying. So whether I agree or disagree, your opinion will be governed by the things.
You know...
Who the hell are you?
Let's, let's try to keep to the thing, to comments about yea or nay, you like it or don't. Yes, ma'am?
The good news is...
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Hi. The good news is the charter commission can get back together and decide to go back to a regular form of government, or a, a selectman form of government if they decide that this doesn't work, if the town manager doesn't work. So you have that going for you. The other thing I have a question on is, does the superintendent of schools report to the town manager?
No, ma'am.
Prior to the budget?
Retired school reports only to the board of ed, okay.
Okay, so then at budget season...
Goes to statute, yeah.
Okay, so a budget...
There's a separation.
So a budget season, um, is there a public forum to present the budget prior to referendum? I know that they have to present it to the town council, um, the, the town manager, and I would assume the superintendent goes to town council? Uh, just board of ed and town council are completely separate? Completely separate?
Board of ed are completely separate.
Okay, so, um, is there, at, at...
Even now, the, the board of ed, the only thing you have now is a presentation by the board of ed to the board of finance.
Right.
They have a meeting usually in a room like this.
Right.
Here to get a good crowd, and, uh, the board of ed will present their budget.
As a formality, yes.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, is there...
Prior to the...
Is there any, um, uh, I guess, well, I guess that would be the, uh, the board of ed, um, budget presentation would be the public forum for it at that point. So is, is there any public forum prior to referendum?
Nothing different in the, in town manager, we put it, no, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We, we did not specify any place where the board of ed would have to present it to the public. Before him.
Or the town council either? So there would be no public forum prior to, um, to referendum? No, I'm just curious.
Hang on, we'll research to see if in fact we did put that in about the town council.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
All the budget meetings, of which there are many, many, they're all open to the public, and you go to as many or as few as you want. Board of ed has budget meetings, you can go to their budget meetings, they all have to be an open session. Town council, a town, a board of selectmen did the same thing, and in the end, there's a, there is a formal public hearing, but you can go, as a matter of fact, if you want to change something, you gotta go in the beginning. You can't wait to the end, like, it's like here, you can't change eighty percent of what this charter commission is doing.
No, I'm not asking to change anything, I'm just asking for, for, just a, a public presentation.
You can go to any of these budget meetings.
You know, in speaking with Mr. Segal, the, uh... You know, in speaking with Mr. Singleton, the, the same format that we have right now about the public hearings before a budget will still be in there.
Okay.
So at that public hearing, again, yes, the budget from the board of education presented along with the budget from the town side. So you still, yes, before the referendum, there is public.
Involvement or something.
Presentation to the board.
Great, thank you.
Just like there is now. Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Conley. I came to this meeting tonight without any definite opinion about the town manager form of government. In fact, if anything, I was probably thinking, oh, probably just makes things worse. You know, another hundred and twenty thousand dollar guy, eighty thousand, but before he, before he does it in the hole. But I'll be honest with you, thinking about it here and hearing all the thoughtful comments, in particular what Stephanie Peterson said. Accountability and professionalism together, I think really could address the two terrible problems that came in this town. One is the fact that we, we can't get the economic development force to move. We haven't gotten that thing to move, we can't get these abandoned properties properly, properly let out, properly, you know, reused. And in general, the town looks like it's in the building. You don't have to go too far down group five to find four no longer used properties together and that's a really bad sign. So something has to jumpstart that process of abandoned town development, maybe have a professional manager put out. I don't see how it could work. Okay, and if he doesn't work or she doesn't work, then in three years they're out and we make another try. And it seems like a whole lot better than just hoping and hoping, which is about the only thing we can do with the current system. The second big problem is this crazy budget process that we have in present where this, this unwanted baby of a budget is presented to the, to the voters. And people say, oh, it's another baby, it's a pretty baby, it's you and stuff. No, there has to be something that's more accountable, more professional about the way that the budget the way that the budget is devised in the first place. I don't see how it would be diverse than what we're doing now. Both respect economic development and we respect the budgeting process. So my opinion has changed in the process of this meeting. I think giving the town manager system a chance is a good idea.
Is there any other comments from the floor? Yes, sir.
Kurt Carrigan, a couple of things. One is, I mean, currently, the board of education budget does go to the board of selectmen and the board of finance. And it does not necessarily rubber stamp. In fact, it has been cut by, before going to referendum. I'm not really, I'm trying to look at the, this very quickly while I'm standing here to see how that's spoken for in the current charter. But that's how it's working.
Saying the board, the board of finance can cut the board of education budget. I don't believe the board of selectmen.
Yeah, the board of selectmen has, they can recommend.
They can recommend.
They can recommend.
But the board of finance can actually cut.
Right, they can also put it back in based upon, you know, they can take it out and the board of finance can put it back in. The question is, is under the new charter, and I'm trying to find it in the current charter. You know, where that's permitted or how that's, how that's authorized. And I, and I guess the thing is, is I want to make sure that we don't lose that ability for the town council to do what the board of finance has previously done if in their opinion, they think that the board of education budget is too high.
I will make a note of that because I think that's an important factor.
And the, the other thing, if I may, is one of the defects in the last charter revision was the concern that powers had been taken away from the board of selectmen that had not been enumerated to the town manager. And therefore left gaps of authority, of things that, that needed to be authorized. And I don't know whether these are in there or not, but it's such things as authorize the execution of contracts, leases, deeds, and other legal instruments, approve and reject collective bargaining.
Wait, 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 go slow.
Well anyways, everything that's in five dash seven, I would urge you to look at the thing.
I, we've covered all contracts. We were very interested in talking about that, go ahead.
Well, that would be the thing.
I want to make sure that we don't miss anything that needs to be.
Okay, but I would just urge you to go through five seven.
Okay.
And make sure that there aren't things missing.
No, I actually took those, copied them down there and went to eat twenty different ways and added to them, so, you know, they're, they should be in the document.
Sometimes I found that we did it like twice just to make sure, but we will definitely do that.
And, and then the.
Town manager, we wish.
And then the other thing I'm not sure is clear in here is the failure, referendum failures. You know, how those, how they go back again and again. I think, you know, it's stipulated, I believe, in the current charter that every two weeks you'll have another one if it fails. And I'm not sure, perhaps Art will know.
That still stays in there. When you take that out, by no means, that still stays in there.
I just would like.
As you know, a little court failure, did you refer to state statutes?
Yeah, we didn't change any of that.
We didn't change any of that as far as I know.
If anything, we did, we added a section saying, hey, if the rejection occurs, that we're going to take it back to the appropriate originator, like to the town budget or to the O E, to make changes.
The only other thing that I would suggest is that, you know, currently you have the workshops, the budget workshops. Your public budget workshops, which I guess will go away with no board of finance. Right now, it looks like you'll have public hearings with the town.
Hold it, hold it, folks, hold it down.
That you'll have public hearings with the town manager and the heads of agencies. I would urge you to include the council to participate in those meetings so they can ask questions of the various agencies.
You were advocating that town councils would still hold those interviews with the department heads?
That they would participate in that, that sounds like it's a public hearing. The way I read it, it's a public hearing with a town manager and each, each of the agencies comes in and presents their, their budget to the town manager. All I would say is it would, I would like to see the council participate in those meetings and be able to ask questions.
Some of these people think that's, sounds pretty good. Adding that little. Sounds like a deal, the town council could also have workshops.
Or maybe they could be, maybe you could put a liaison into it, you know, that some of them, you know.
We'll work on that.
It's not a public hearing, it's just a.
I think it's a good.
Yes, Michael.
Because the, the way I'm interpreting what you're saying is if the town manager happens to disagree with the department head. There's no way for that department head to say, well, let me present my case to a broader group of people. You know, you, you may have differences in opinion with the department or with the town manager, but that doesn't mean that's not in the best interest of the town. Just maybe you guys have a difference in opinion.
You have something there, right?
I think.
We had one of the key things that, one of the first things of the town council is they establish policy for this town. Policies established by the town council. The manager carries out that policy. That's a good point.
I, I, I don't, I like the idea of not being able to circumvent maybe bold directions. But there should be some sort of process for department heads to say. I, we agree to disagree, but I'm going to go to the elected board and say, this is my case, this is what I really want to do. And the town council should be able to vote. Because they're the ones that, the people elect. You, you should give the ability for those departments to say, let's go to the vast majority of the elected board.
I think you have to be very careful, to put it, if it's not under, if you hire a town manager, if it's a CEO.
You can't undercut that.
You can't have somebody back for it. You have to be very careful, this meeting shouldn't have some other oversights.
I agree, it's a fine line, but I think you're going to have a hard time telling the people that their department heads had no voice to a voted group of people.
They have a voting voice to the council, I mean, you can always go to the council, on the council meeting and say, look. You know, I talked to this manager here back about two weeks ago, blah, 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 blah. And the guy or a woman blew me off, he told me, oh, this is crazy, you know, you have nobody, you didn't give me, you know, and then the council.
But there's no formal way to do that.
There's a public hearing.
This can be brought about a public round, we could, we, I think we could talk about this.
Again, you see, that's what you're trying to eliminate, for the lack of any other words to say, you know, I'm not the best.
Department heads are necessarily a lot of this.
You can't have that many chefs in the, in making this stew. You know, you got the chef, he's the man. Like I said before, he's the man that is living and dying, or a woman that's living and dying by that. Tip top thirty-five down the line to make sure that this is.
I, I agree.
To keep you happy as a, as a department head, to keep me happy as Joe resident and do.
I agree, but, and you've been around a lot of.
It's not going to be an easy job, I'm a one.
And you, you've been in this kind of industry long enough to know that sometimes personality, you know.
I can see your reservations, I know exactly what you're talking about.
There's also the director of finance in these meetings as well. So you have two people in that meeting and maybe you could have a liaison from the town council be in there, but not the entire town council. But we could, we could talk about that.
Yeah, it's certainly something to look at, we're not going to dispel it all, I can tell you that. We will not just throw it out, it suffers for us to still talk about it. But thank you, that's, that's. Is there anything else, folks?
Do you have a date yet when they're bringing it to the board of selectmen?
No, we're, we're going to have another meeting, take all these comments and everything. See what we can do about it together. And then I would say, within a week or two, at the most, we'll be asking the first lady to put us on the, on the docket. And we'll present it to the board of selectmen. Anything else, folks? Thank you very much for your support, thank you for your comments.